Welcome everyone to the April Board of Trustees Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. If you would, please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we thank you once again for bringing this wonderful group of leaders and servants of you and St. Petersburg College together to focus on what's best for our students in Pinellas County and how can we best serve them, lead for them, put things together that help them succeed and become the best that they can be within Pinellas. We thank you so much for the love and grace that you show us and we ask that we can in return show those around us the same types of things. Thank you for your patience, for your forgiveness. Thank you for your leadership and direction. We ask, Lord, that you would humbly allow us to approach this meeting today, that we take all things in consideration, that we look at the picture fully in all the decisions that we make, and you walk with us every step of the way in this next month of this spring semester. It's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We'll start first today with a presentation of retirement resolutions, and I'd like to invite up Laurel Miller first. Right over here at the microphone. Thank you.
This is like some of the most fun part of the board meeting. Not because you're leaving, Laurel, it's because...
[laughing]
Resolution: Whereas Laurel Miller began her St. Petersburg College career in 2002 as a tutor in the Mathematics and Accessibility Resources Department, and whereas Mrs. Miller continued her work with the Mathematics Department until graduating with a bachelor's degree from our College of Ed. In 2010, she then left St. Petersburg College to teach at a high school level for a year. And whereas Ms. Miller returned to St. Petersburg College in 2011 to work with the STEM program on the Clearwater Campus, she moved to the Tarpon Springs Campus in 2012 where she has served with distinction as a career and academic advisor since that time. And whereas Ms. Miller has been a leader among her peers, a true advocate for students and their success in the classroom and life, as an advisor to the Phi Theta Kappa chapter on the Tarpon Springs Campus, she helped return the chapter to its coveted five-star rating. Her incredible support of students and colleagues throughout the years will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Laurel Miller and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this sixteenth day of April 2019. Laurel.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. It's always great to be recognized for doing a good job. One of the things that I think I'm going to miss the most is solving problems and helping the students, but I'm definitely looking forward to the next chapter. So, appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laurel. And now we'd like to invite up Linda Womer.
Maybe I should just stay standing back there. I mean...
[laughing]
Phew. Come on up. Yes. Just let's come on around this way, so... I'll start reading while the troops are coming up. Resolution: Whereas Linda Womer began her distinguished St. Petersburg College career in 1984 as coordinator for open campus, and whereas Ms. Womer's leadership skills were quickly recognized and within the year she was promoted to a new position as coordinator for College for Kids. Over the next thirteen years additional responsibilities were added, including dual credit and study abroad. And whereas Ms. Womer became tel... you became the telecourse coordinator at the Seminole Campus in 1998 and was responsible for securing a grant which changed the college forever. The grant resulted in the development of the first online college course in Florida and the college's eCampus was born. And whereas Ms. Womer worked tirelessly throughout her career for the success of eCampus and in 2004 her dedication was nationally recognized when she was presented with a Lifetime Achievement Award in Distance Education. And whereas Ms. Womer was named Seminole Campus Associate Provost in 2005 but continued her work with online education which included serving as Chairman of the Instructional Technology Council for the American Association of Community Colleges. Over the years she has served on numerous college committees and has brought honor and distinction to St. Petersburg College through her work on statewide projects and committees. Her insights and knowledge are sought after by colleagues who have gratefully benefited from her warm and friendly counsel and advice. I'm one of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Linda Womer and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this sixteenth day of April 2019.
Thank you.
Linda, say a few words.
Thank you. I'm tired just listening to that. Mark did a good job writing. I think he gave me more credit than maybe was due, but thank you. I want to thank the Board of Trustees, Dr. Williams, Mark, the Provost, and my Associate Provost, Pete. It's been great. It's been a great ride and I've enjoyed every minute of it and I'm looking forward to the next step.
Wow. Thank you both for your dedication to St. Petersburg College, to your service to the students here. What amazing resumes.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. Next I'd like to invite up Dr. Rod Davis to introduce the new Lippa Ratner Museum of Fine Arts Director.
Good morning, Madam President, Board Chair, Board Members.
Morning.
I stand here before you to introduce our new Director of the Lippa Ratner Museum, Dr. Teresa Wilkins. Dr. Wilkins comes to us with 12 years' experience of museum and university. She has held numerous positions, one of which is Corporate and Foundation Relations Manager at the Tampa Museum of Art, Membership Manager at the Museum of Fine Arts, St. Petersburg Exhibits Coordinator at the Ataki-Ki Museum in Cleuston, Florida, and Assistant Curator at the Indiana Museum of Art. She has earned her PhD from Indiana University Bloomington in Art History and Anthropology and also a Master in Art History and Anthropology and did a little stint with a Bachelor in Art History from the University of South Florida. Please welcome Dr. Teresa Wilkins to the Tarpon Springs Campus.
Madam President, Board Chair, Board Members, guests, thank you very much for having me here this morning. I'm excited about the opportunity and I'm more than thrilled to be a part of such an amazing college system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We'll move to comments and I'll keep it brief today. I had the opportunity to attend the Good Vibes Festival at Williams Park. Unfortunately, not as long as I'd like to have been there. I just wanted to thank the downtown campus for putting that together in conjunction with USF St. Petersburg Downtown. I think it's important that we as a college learn to work in unique ways with the other institutions around us, and that was a fantastic event that is extremely difficult to put on when you're dealing with vendors, the city of St. Petersburg permitting, and getting all the approvals you need to do something like that, and booking live music as well. But we appreciate the effort and it was great to see, and it was another way that St. Petersburg College can actually be a part of the community and out in the community to spread the good word of what we do. I also just want to thank all the efforts that went into the Foundation's Scholarship Appreciation Luncheon. Once again, fantastic event like it is every year, one of my favorite to attend. Such an amazing place to have everyone, all those students who have benefited from these scholarships together at one time, to hear some of those stories and to talk to some of those students face to face. The Foundation and the supporters of the Foundation are truly changing lives, one student at a time, and that's evident every year. Thank you, Jessie, for your leadership there this year as well. And with that, we'll move to other board comments.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to echo congratulations for the Scholarship Luncheon. It was a wonderful event. One of the most meaningful parts of it was not only hearing the students, but specifically hearing the students speak about their relationship with their professors and the provosts and the administrators on campus. I was sitting with a gentleman who was on the Clearwater Campus and worked, talked his stories about Dr. Vito's very direct influence on his life was very inspiring to know that the reach of every single person on campus with our students. So, thank you all for making it such a success.
Any other comments from the board? We'll move to our President.
Well, I try not to be long, but I just have too much to brag on, so you guys have to indulge me for a second. First, I want to recognize one of our faculty stars who we lost since the last board meeting, Dr. Bruce Brody. He was, I believe, one of our math instructors and loved by all. And I thought about Bruce last night and thought we would share with the board that we lost one of our best and brightest, and I want to thank the Palladium for hosting the memorial and for all of you who came to support Bruce's family. It meant a lot to them and I just want to thank you for being there and for the work you have done. Let's not forget his family. It's usually after the memorial services that they really need help, so let's remember to reach out to his wife. I want to thank trustee Stone Cypher and Bello for going to the AFC meeting in Tallahassee and walking the halls with me with the legislators. It meant a lot. Something that we did that we've not done ever, I think, is we had three Tallahassee trips back to back and we had the...
To back.
Back to back.
To back.
Yes. And we had the SPC leadership team there. Thank you, Brian, for your leadership and the work of your team and getting them through that. We had the Senate President come and speak to the group and I think all of our delegates showed. And then we had the students after that, and I was there for that and they had a very similar experience. And so I want to thank all of you who attended those weeks. I think next year, instead of having three visits, we're going to have one and have SPC Day like some of the other colleges, and they have pictures through the hall of legislators who support SPC. And it gives our students, our trustees, and our employees a chance to spend some time together. And so we're looking at doing something a little bit different than we did before. The Association of Florida Colleges has recognized St. Petersburg College in various ways. One of our students in our health programs won the Bob Graham Service Award. Professor Sharon Olson won the Distinguished Faculty Award. Professor John Kearney was a finalist for the Ernest Boyer Award for Teaching and Learning, and Professor Trish Gorham, she represented the college in Teaching and Learning Award for our Veterinary Technology Program. And I was there to give these out, so it was just like icing on the cake. So that was very good. Phi Theta Kappa at a new chapter won the Distinguished Chapter Award this year, and they also won the Distinguished Honors in Action Award this year. So we're proud of that. Professor Brad Yorth took some of our coding students for the first time on a competition where there were 80 students attending, and the SPC coders won the team event. We won the team competition. And one of our students, Joshua Welsh, took third place in an individual competition. We held several conferences at the college since we met last. We had our Narrowing the Gulf Conference, which is co-sponsored by the SPC's Retention Services and Accessibility Services Department, SEDO, and the Florida Association of Higher Ed Disability, the AHEAD Group. And we had quite a few people here. Some were from out of state, out of county, and local. We also held our Teaching and Learning Conference last week and just so pleased to have had Julian Gordon help the faculty learn about engagement and how to work with millennials in different generations. What was really cool is that we had about 200 attendees and we had people from all over the nation. So it was, it's growing. I think we need to do a better job of advertising that, but I think we've done very good with that. Our Women on the Way Conference took place. It was full and it was at Seminole Campus, and that too is out of the Retention Services Department, and that went well. I won't go back to the Scholarship Luncheon. You talked about that in the Good Vibes, but I do want to give a shout out to Frank Yurkovich for the Good Vibes work. He worked with the city and with USF to pull that off, and we had some very impressive bands and a lot of good artists were out there who participated. Our Model UN held a conference for high school students working on the global classroom. I believe it was at the Clearwater Campus. It was heavily participated in, and I think that's the first one, Dr. Vito, that we've ever done, I think. No, so we've done that before. It probably was the best one then. So, it was, it was one. It was, it was a good one, so I'm proud of that. And then one of our former students, a graduate, Mecca Cerfustini, won a Rising Star Award at the Governor's 2019 Hurricane Conference. She graduated from Public Policy and Administration in 2015. And I think that pretty much sums up what has happened, the good work that's been going on, and the team out there is really moving things forward. I'm sure I missed something, but I'm very proud of what they've been doing.
That's all we have in 30 days? That's it?
That's it.
All right. That's a great update. Thank you so much, President Williams. I see no public comments before me, so we'll move on to the review and approval of last month's March 19 minutes.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move to our monthly reports. Ms. Gardner.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Stone Cypher and trustees. I laid on your desk a memorandum which is an update to the April 5 memorandum concerning the adjunct faculty union. We do have an election consent agreement filed with the State Commission. There is one outstanding issue, and that is the scheduling and timing of the mail-in election. So what I placed with your memorandum is just our request that has gone to the State Commission on the timing of that, so we do have that disagreement with the union, but we'll keep you apprised and posted on that.
Do we know, Ms. Gardner, when we think that will be resolved? 30 days, 60 days?
No. I'm hoping like within the next month.
Okay.
I don't believe that will have an answer by the end of the semester, but as you can see in the motion, we have asked that the mail-in election be scheduled in the fall. So the Commission will make the decision as to when it will be scheduled.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll move to our Learning Experience Presentation with Mr. Leopold, Dr. Ulrich, and Ms. Rachel Bennett.
Yes.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Stone Cypher, Board Members, and Dr. Williams. I am Joe Leopold, Dean of Communications, and along with my colleagues, Dr. Shannon Ulrich and Professor Rachel Bennett. I'll be providing you with an update on the learning experience. This is a faculty-led committee that encompasses a collaborative and supportive environment where clear expectations for students and faculty are communicated, mutual ownership of the learning process is cultivated, and where purposeful reflection and commitment to scholarship is fostered with academic excellence as the ultimate goal. You may recall from the December 2018 Board Workshop that five primary goals were established for the coming year. These are: Track the posting of engaging syllabi three days prior to courses starting; track use of course gradebook to provide timely feedback to students, i.e. for the eight-week and 12-week courses, weekly for those, biweekly for the 16-week courses; review and revise a student survey of instruction, or SSI; use student focus groups to help identify best practices and design faculty resources to support enhanced use; these are culturally responsive pedagogy, for instance, assignments, work that meets their cultural backgrounds of the students; and then develop and implement strategies to increase success rates for minority males to close the success gap. My role this morning is to discuss the first two goals. Goal one concerns tracking the posting of engaging syllabi three days prior to courses starting. We believe that, among other things, a good syllabus lays out a clear expectations of students and faculty, as well as provides a roadmap to success for students. Course outcomes and objectives are included, as are links and descriptions of valuable resources for students. As you'll see in the graph, overall, we achieved nearly 98 percent. That's accounting for more than 2,900 individual classes in the posting of syllabi for this semester. I want to mention that this was the first semester of implementing this tool, this tracking tool, and that we are impressed with a high number of faculty committed to providing this vital resource to students prior to the start of the semester. Our goal is to have 100 percent every semester on the posting of the syllabi. Goal two concerns tracking the use of the course gradebook to provide timely feedback to students. This creates an environment of accountability and responsibility for both students and faculty. To reiterate, the eight-week and 12-week classes, the expectation is that students would have grades posted weekly, and for 16-week classes, grades would be posted biweekly. Like the posting of syllabi, this is also something that we have not tracked before. And we are, again, impressed with the high percentages seen with upwards of 80 and 90 percent of our courses meeting the updating criteria. This indicates a large majority of our faculty are updating their gradebooks at regular intervals, thereby providing our students with the opportunity to assess their standing in the course throughout the term. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ulrich, who will walk us through the next two goals.
Good morning, Chairman Stone Cypher, Dr. Williams, and members of the board.
Good morning.
I'm Dr. Shannon Ulrich, and I'm going to pick up this update to discuss the progress of some of the goals I've been more intimately involved with, starting with the Student Survey of Instruction, or SSI, revision. The revision committee includes roughly 40 members, including full-time faculty, a couple of adjunct faculty, and a dean. The process is involved research into other institutions' questions, bias associated with the survey, factor analysis, and input from several students. The committee members have been tasked with reporting to fellow faculty and soliciting feedback throughout the process. We currently have a list of eight Likert scale questions, and we will work to refine the open-ended questions at our May 3 meeting, which is coming up. After that meeting, we will get feedback from faculty, deans, and students, and we hope to have a SSI that will be implemented in the fall of 2019. At the beginning of this learning experience adventure, we made the commitment to hear from our students to better gauge our strengths and weaknesses. So with the help of the amazing Dewan Fox, who I asked to stand up and take a bow, but he refused, and also our amazing student life and leadership coordinators, we held student focus groups at five campuses, including St. Pete Gibbs, Clearwater, Tarpon Springs, Seminole, and the downtown campus. We first asked, "Who wants free pizza?" More than 50 students answered that call. That was the easy part. And we had quite the variety of students. We heard from students in early college. We had some student athletes, and we even had a homeless veteran. Our students ranged from general AA students to our baccalaureate students. They ranged from online to face-to-face students. And based on my estimates, the age of our students that we talked with ranged from 16 to over 60, so we got a pretty good snapshot of the students here at SPC. Furthermore, we had about 48 percent of the voices that we heard from were actually minorities, which was really important for us. We asked five questions, starting with, "How often do you log into my courses?" Most actually said between four and five times per week, which we hope is true, and if it is, it really highlights the importance of utilizing that LMS tool that we have. We also asked, "How soon do you expect feedback?" Most said, "Depends on the assignment," and a lot of students understood quality feedback takes time. They also understood that faculty have lives as well. However, they did ask to see that feedback come to them prior to the next submission, so they could use it to better their next submission. After warming up with these relatively easy questions, we asked our big take-home question, which was, "What makes for an engaging experience?" We got a lot of great responses for this question, and I will review specific goals and areas of improvement we devised in two slides from now. But I wanted to include this Wordle to really highlight the take-home message. It's the professor and the other students that make a great experience. Students commented on enjoying classes that were interactive and included stories, questions, and relevant real-world examples, but they also mentioned that a great class can easily be brought down by other students that don't contribute to the conversation or those that try to monopolize the conversation. We also asked students, "What type of feedback would you like if you're struggling in your course?" Most answered text or email, and then quite a few also suggested that before-after class chat. We also asked, "What type of assessments can we use to determine if you're learning?" Interestingly enough, our students answered, "They wanted more assessments." They wanted to be able to better gauge where they stand in learning that material throughout the course, instead of just having these big exams. They also mentioned more low-stake assignments and less high-stake exams in online courses, which is actually great to hear, because we are piloting an artificial intelligence proctoring system this summer called Proctorio, and if adopted, we might be able to offer more proctored exams that are lower-stake. More to come on that. So after analyzing all of this feedback, we found some major themes and areas we think we can target for improving the learning experience. These include classroom management, know your audience, coaching and encouraging, active teaching and assessment, structure and organization of the course. Rachel Bennett shared these areas of improvement with the Learning Experience Committee last Thursday and tasked us with homework. We are to bring in resources that we currently use that supports one of these areas of improvement. At our next meeting, we'll be sharing our resources and formulating a plan to strengthen these areas in the coming academic year. I'm now going to turn it over to Rachel to discuss our final goal and next steps.
Good morning, Chairman Stone Cypher, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. I am Rachel Bennett, currently full-time faculty in Paralegal Studies, but I'm transitioning into the role of SEDO Director in May, so very excited about that. But I mention that because I have been a faculty member on the Learning Experience Committee since its inception, and so I'm really excited to see us at the point that we're really moving the ball forward and creating some solid plans. So I get the pleasure of sharing with you some things that are already being done to meet some of the goals that were identified at the last BOT meeting that Learning Experience presented at. So that fifth goal was developing and implementing strategies to help close the achievement gap. One of the initiatives that's already off the ground is an initiative put together by Dean Smiley, Dean Demers, and Matt Bodie from Learning Resources, and they have put together a list of African-American male students who have a GPA below 2.0, and the process has looked a little bit like this. Dean Smiley has reached out to those students several times this semester, just saying, "Hey, I'm here personally. Your faculty are here. Here are learning resources that you can use," so on and so forth. Dean Smiley also sent an email to all faculty members who had these students in their Dean Smiley also sent an email to all faculty members who had these students in their courses and said, "Please be aware, you have these students, here's the information on the learning resources, opportunities, please share, please encourage." And then the Learning Resources folks have also emailed these students and said, "Hi, we're here, this is who we are, please contact us if we can help." So this is, at its inception, this is the first semester, it's sort of going full circle, so we'll have more information on what this looks like in terms of results later, but it certainly seems like something that makes sense in terms of helping these students reach the benchmark that's out there. So I look forward to bringing you more information on how that pans out as we move forward. Some other things that are already happening, as you may remember, our QEP this time around was targeted at helping students have some grit, have some tenacity, meet the bar, all those great things. And so one of the things that QEP is doing that's universal for our students is putting together toolkits that they can use to enhance their time here at SPC. The Time Management Toolkit has been out all semester and has been available to students and faculty to use in their courses. My understanding is, I think we're trying to do comprehension and growth mindset over the summer, and then metacognition would be finished in the fall, but regardless, the next three will be finished in the fall to share with students. In addition to that, SEDAL worked with the College of Education faculty to put together a training, professional development training that we can use to help our faculty, advisors, and other folks get on board with culturally responsive pedagogy, and just reaching out to students in an appropriate way, right? We also, as Dr. Williams mentioned, had Julian Gordon as a guest speaker, and part of his focus was helping us bridge the achievement gap. And one of the more interesting sessions at the Teaching and Learning Conference was a panel that included Dean Demers, Dean Smiley, Heather Disler from Learning Resources, and a whole bunch of faculty in the room, and it was a really great conversation, because I think there are some misunderstandings about what we mean when we say culturally responsive pedagogy, and the thing that I walked away with, that I thought was so important, is the express direction that we're not asking faculty to lower the bar so that people can be successful, but we're giving students what they need to get to the bar that everyone else is achieving for. So it was a really great conversation, and those conversations are happening more and more. In addition to that, bridging the achievement gap will be one of the fall themes that SEDAL tackles, so there'll be more professional development brought out on that as well. So in terms of the Learning Experience next steps, I did give homework, can't help it, it's who I am. So the idea in giving homework is that we can start compiling some resources that will lead to really great professional development for folks to use. And so I think most of SEDAL's focus next year is going to be on those five areas of improvement, providing faculty with professional development to help us understand what the students meant and also how we can meet that need. So in addition to that, we will be looking at, how do we get 100 percent compliance for syllabus posting and gradebook usage? We'll also be looking at, how do we continue to bridge our Learning Resources folks with our students who are in that category that need the additional support, and just overall bridging the achievement gap? As Dr. Ulrich mentioned, the SSI is moving forward. Thank goodness. So the process for that is laid out, and we're making great progress on that. And as I said, SEDAL's already kind of committed to focusing on these topics in our professional development for particularly the fall, but probably into the spring as well. And we decided we would tackle classroom management and assessment approaches first. Any questions?
Thank you, that was fantastic. I do, I mean, we're obviously moving in the right direction, but this is a lot to put together.
It is.
And it's something in which we need to spend time on to do it correctly. One question with one of the current strategies, with the students below 2.0 GPA, I know we've just started to reach out to them in a more deliberate manner. How have those conversations gone? How does that, how has that communication gone so far? Does it seem like the majority of students we've reached out to are receptive? I know it's early, but...
Yeah, and I have to say that Dean Smiley has been doing this on a regular basis. This is the first time, though, that we're closing the loop with letting faculty know and then circling in our learning support people.
Gotcha.
So I think he would have a different answer about what it's looked like in the past, because he has always done, has done this for a significant period of time. But my understanding in talking to faculty is that they have been really receptive to, "Hey, I'm glad to know the students in my class, I want to provide the additional support." I don't know that I have feedback on the student side, do you?
Well, I can say that Director Bodie has actually presented some of the numbers at some of the set calls that we've had, and we actually have seen, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but we have seen an increase in those targeted, that targeted group. And I personally have a class where I got that email, and I, what it looks like for me is, I actually have reached out to all of my students and said, "Hey, we're going to have a workshop right before the first exam." And I've reached out to the tutor, I've actually given him some old exams so that he can use that to then work on his workshop, and I do have these numbers. The students that went to the first workshop, they actually increased their grades by an average of 19 points from exam one to exam two. From exam two to exam three, larger group, they increased their grades by an average of nine points, and I had two people get 100 percent. And my targeted student did increase his grade as well. So normally, I see my grades kind of start off high and then kind of go like this. This semester, I'm seeing it like this, because of this approach. So I think anecdotally that we are making some pretty significant progression, although I don't have numbers, exact numbers for you.
And we're going to keep working on this to scale it out, to make sure that we are closing that achievement gap. That's the only way we're going to reach economic mobility. And so this is something that's very important to me, and I want to applaud the faculty for owning it and us not having to be involved, and this has been great. I would not have been able to make this move this quick to get these kinds of things going and to get the engagement going. I think the work they have done is partially the reason why the withdrawal rates went down 10.4 percent in the fall, and I believe they're down this semester as well. I'm not sure if it's like 2.5 or something like that, but they're keeping students and helping them move through, which I think is amazing.
Retaining students was one of our goals, of course, and unfortunately, this is something that we'll always be tweaking and working on and looking at and changing, so I hate to say that the job will never be done, but this is a great start, and I think we've already seen good results from this, so thank you all. Any other questions from the Board? Mayor Foster?
We had five focus group meetings on five different campuses, and we reached about 50 students. I mean, are you okay with the size of the focus group? Are you going to try it again? Are you going to try to expand? I know, I know you don't want them to be super big, but...
So we, great question. We talked about that when I met with Dewan, he was the one that kind of facilitated the groups for me, because I had never done a student focus group, and I was like, "Let's bring everybody, like grab students, whoever you can grab." He said, "Whoa, Shannon, calm down, because if we get too many people in the room, then we're not going to get our questions answered, and then it turns into a little bit of chaos." So I was like, "Okay." And we had about, I think, eight to 10 was our aver, about 10 was about our average. But when we got to downtown, we left the free pizza sign outside, and so we had students come in, and we had about, I think we got up to like 14, and it was. It got, it got to the point where it was almost like, okay, this is being nonproductive now. So we want to try to keep those numbers down. I don't think this is the last time we're going to do student focus groups. I think that this should be a part of a check-in that we have, a pulse check, if you will.
Right.
And the, as you mentioned too, this is going to be ongoing, this is going to be evolving, so those comments and statements that we saw might evolve as well. What does make me really comfortable is that when we looked at the student responses at the five different campuses, the theme emerged at every single campus. We heard pretty much the same thing at every single campus. So given time constraints, and we wanted to kind of push forward, we were really comfortable with this data, with the consistency of every single campus.
I was comfortable with the data because of the demographics of the folks in the focus groups. We didn't have all student government people, and, I mean, we really sought individuals who really need the help, and we need to hear from them, because student government, they're, they're quick, they're going to speak up. Other groups don't, and so we sought after specific individuals to make sure that we had a good balance and get the voices of those who, who may be a part of the gap that we're trying to close, to hear what's keeping them from succeeding.
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to our Budget and Finance update with Ms. Janette Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning Board Trustees and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
This morning, my presentation will include two parts. One, the monthly budget report, and then secondly, we'll talk about some highlights for the fiscal year 1920 budget. So first, looking at our revenue as of March 31st, our student tuition and fees came in at $57.4 million. Our state funding, $47.9 million. This is the second month that we've received a lottery payment, and so that's about $6.6 million, and we'll continue to receive that throughout the rest of the fiscal year. Our other revenues at $3.7 million. You see here in comparison to the prior year, it looks like it's lagging behind. In the last couple months, I presented to you the increase in our use of facilities that has still continued. This particular situation is timing of some of our revenue that's come in. Last year just came in a month earlier than this year. Then our fund transfers in, this is our transfers in from our auxiliary fund. We have now transferred, at this point of the year, $1.5 million. Our total revenue at $110.5 million. Here, this is our chart projecting our tuition revenue. Right now, about $270,000 above the budgeted amount. The breakout here among the different types of tuition, our credit tuition is, we're projecting about $550,000 more than the budgeted amount. Our post-secondary adult vocation, about $25,000. And our non-credit, you have seen that we are a little under what the budgeted amount is. I mentioned to you last month, there were some slight changes in the variance. Again, this month, that variance has decreased a little more. Next, looking at our expenditures, we are 75 percent through the fiscal year, so we see here with our personnel and benefits, we're $81.9 million at about 74 percent. Our current expenses at 75 percent at $22.2 million, capital 1.3, for our total operating expense at $105.4 million. If we look at our revenue minus our expense at this point, we're at $5.1 million. We do know that we have received majority of this, of the tuition for our students, with the exception of Sum of Summer, but we'll see this variance start to decrease. We are projecting to see a surplus in this area at the end of the fiscal year, but we will see that number decrease. Any questions on the monthly budget report?
Ms. Hunt, I have, I have one question. Going back to the current expenses, is there a reason why last year we were at 63.7 percent at this point in time, and this year we're at 74.7?
Yes, there is. This was due to the transfer out for our health insurance fund.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
So back in February, I told you I would present to you some of the major impacts that we needed to, that influenced the fiscal year 1920 budget. On the next couple slides, we will see some of those impacts. The first major impact this year is the actual development process of the budget. For the last 10 years, the college has mostly used a traditional or incremental budget development process, where the prior-year budget is the base of the budget development of the upcoming year. This process is mostly centralized, with the exception of adjustments to the budget based on the new year-to-year changes. In the development of fiscal year 1920 budget, the college implemented a modified zero-based budgeting process. Typically, in true zero-based budget process, this starts with zero, and we also, you do not use any historical data. For us, this process was modified for two main reasons. The development process started with a base higher than zero, because most of our personnel and benefits amount were included from the start. And secondly, because historical data was used to create a budget maximum amount to each budget supervisor or program manager responsible for a budget. One of the main reasons we decided to implement modified zero-based budgeting was to align with the budget process with the four Cs that Dr. Williams established at the beginning of her presidency: communication, collaboration, culture, and creativity, which leads to the community of care vision set forth by Dr. Williams. It is important that the vision of the community of care is represented throughout all of the college's processes, including fiscally. Just to mention a few of the items that supported the four Cs, I wanted to share with you just a few of them. One is the increase of department program managers' engagement and giving them more opportunity and initiative to build a budget, empowering them to be creative, and it also allows for a mechanism of accountability. Secondly, all costs were justified or tied to the five strategic priorities, which are recruitment, retention, learning experience, employee engagement, and resource reallocation. This differs from the traditional budgeting process, because in the traditional budgeting process, it's designed to where only the new adjusted amounts are tied to the strategic priorities. And thirdly, the increase in cost efficiencies and operational efficiencies. This is probably one of my favorite of them, because it was really cool to see the communication and collaboration across the college, and not just within managers, but even seeing how we had staff assistants all the way up to executive leadership having conversations about the budget, being very intentional about what they were planning for, and even asking questions like, "Why are we doing things this way?" and sharing new ideas. Next, we'll focus on some of the impacts that will influence us dollar-wise. First, looking at our revenue. Our tuition budget will be based on the tuition revenue being flat to the current budget amount, with some minor adjustments. Although the budget amount will be similar to the current year, the college still has a plan to increase enrollment, and we're committed to the strategic priority of recruitment and retention. Next, with our state funding, the legislative session does not end until May 3rd. Right now, we have no solid numbers as to where we will land. You all are familiar with the process, so we'll continue to update that and see where we land shortly, assuming there's no special session. Next, with our performance funding. In the current fiscal year, there's been a total of $60 million available for performance funding. $30 million represented the amount the Florida colleges put forth, and $30 million was the state investment. There has been some discussion about performance funding, but right now, again, same as the state funding, it's still up in the air as to where we would land. I will say that in the last two years, we have received the actual allocation amount after you, the Board, has approved our budget. And so what we've done in those cases in the following Board meeting will update you with that amount. If the amount is significant, we will come to you with an amended budget for your approval. Next, for our transfers in from our auxiliary. The auxiliary fund supports the transfers in our operating fund. 65 percent of our auxiliary fund is supported by textbook sales commission. On the average, in the last few years, we've seen about an average of 10 percent decrease in those commissions revenue. Although the textbook commission's revenue is changing, we are continuing to explore creative ways to look at other avenues of revenue in that fund. We're projecting in the next fiscal year to transfer in about $2.5 million versus the $3.1 million that we have in the budget for this fiscal year. Lastly, on the revenue is our reliance on our reserve. So about three years ago, there was a plan in place to reduce that reliance. We started at $4.6 million, and the next year, we reduced it to 1.8. This current year, $1 million. Our plan for next fiscal year is for that amount to be zero. Now to look at some of the major impacts and expense that will influence the budget. First, personnel. In the past three months, we have reduced the personnel budget by $8 million. Sorry, three years. That's drastic. In the past three years, we reduced it by $8 million. Just in the last two years, the budget ratio has gone from 78 percent to 77 percent. It's unlikely that you'll see that amount of reduction in the next fiscal year's budget. We are performing a deep analysis, though, on particular categories within our personnel, such as our other personal services, our adjunct and supplemental. such as our other personal services, our adjunct and supplemental. Then for our health insurance fund, as you are aware, we've been building our health insurance fund. We currently are working with the actuary projections for the calendar year 2019, 2020, to ensure that we have enough funds there to support the claims, and also to continue to be, meet our safe harbor requirement. Just as a reminder, our safe harbor requirement is two months of estimated claims. We did just find out on Friday that the state has changed that calculation and included stop-loss. We've asked for more detail on that information, so we'll bring back more information on how that actually impacts us financially. And then lastly, we have our project for our PeopleSoft Student System upgrade to 9.2. That project started in this current fiscal year at $1.8 million, and it will continue in the next fiscal year. We also have some other things that may impact the expense, such as our Florida retirement rates, which we have not received the updates from the state, and some other minor things, but we will, our plan is to keep an eye on that, finalize some of the numbers, come back to you next month with some numbers to our budget, and possibly propose a budget for your approval. Any questions on that portion of the presentation?
Ms. Hunt, I know you told us last month. Can you just remind us again of the timeline from here to budget approval?
Yes. So our initial plan was to come back in May with a proposed budget for your approval. And then if you have any feedback or things that we need to change, we have June to possibly come back for any updates. That all depends, too, based on where the state, when we get our numbers from the state, and if there's a special session and things like that. But the plan is to come to you next month with a budget.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
All right, thank you.
Not since business school have I been so excited to hear about modified zero-based budgeting. I think it's the right move, and I'm happy to see that we're heading in that direction. Thank you. With that, we'll move to our Human Resources Report. Board, you have a personnel report in front of you. I have a motion and a second. We know what you're talking about. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And with that, we'll move to our Employee Engagement Presentation with Ms. Margaret Bowman.
So before we get started, I would like for everyone in the audience who participated in the employee experience to please stand and be recognized. I think that's a fourth of the groups that we worked with. I just want to thank you for all of your hard work and for participating and providing a clear direction and understanding on what your experiences have been. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Stone Seifer, President Williams, and members of the board. I'm Margaret Bowman. I am with the Office of Organizational and Employee Success, and thrilled to see the folks that were here, that represented or were part of the employee focus groups, and that alone is a testament of the level of engagement, the emotional commitment that our employees have to the college. So what I'm going to provide for you today is an update on this employee engagement initiative, which you first, we talked about back at the December workshop. And again, just want to thank Dr. Williams for making the employee experience a priority at the college. Thank you. So what you're looking at now is just an overview of the timeline. So we started with Dr. Williams really requesting the survey back in the fall of 2018. We commissioned that with the survey in November, and then the past few months leading up to the end of March, we were in the data collection and analysis phase. So now we're moving into the actual implementation and improvement of the priority areas that the employees identified. So what you'll see here is really a high-level overview of the engagement metrics that we will be looking at over the years as we make the various improvement strategies, and I'll go into more detail with that in the following slides. The first score to really look at is our participation rate. So overall, for the college, we had a 44% participation rate. While that may seem low, keep in mind that we invited anybody who received a paycheck from the college last year to take this. So that includes all of our OPS, our adjunct, our student employees, including interns, which makes up actually more than half of our total employee population. If we look at the participation of our full-time employees, we were actually at 80%, which is higher than, decision-wise, is our vendor's global benchmark for our first-time administration. And if you look at the response rate by division, you'll see that academic affairs came in a little bit lower than the others. However, the reason for that is because it also has the highest number of those part-time employees. So the next metric that we look at is our overall favorability score. So what favorability is looking at are the number of questions that were responded to with either an answer of "I agree with this statement" or "I strongly agree with this statement." And our overall favorability score is 72%. And according to our vendor, anything that has a favorability score of less than 70% is an area of opportunity for us to look at. So the survey also looked at the levels of engagement at four dimensions in the college. So it was looking at how employees felt about their job, about the team, their colleagues that they work with, their immediate supervisor, and then as the college as a whole, as a system. Our opportunity really lies within that college level. So what that's really telling us is it's our systems, our legacy systems, our processes, our practices, our procedures, all of the things that come with a very large, complex, dynamic, and multi-campus organization. Okay? So that's not untypical of organizations of this size, that we find our opportunities really lie within those systems, the structure of our systems and procedures. The next measure that we look at is our engagement level. And so what this is looking at is employees' really, their commitment to stay, the commitment to the organization, and their intent to stay with the organization. And it measures engagements on two levels. So the emotional connection to the institution, as well as their rational level. So are they able to see the connection between what they do in their jobs on a day-to-day basis, and how that impacts or how that aligns to the mission of the college? So the two factors that we look at are those employees who are fully engaged or key contributors. And with that, that gives us an engagement level of 74%. Okay? So that is a little bit lower than our vendor's global average. And then if we look at our opportunity group, and then those employees that, based on how they responded, would be considered fully disengaged, that's a little bit higher than, decision-wise, is global norm. So if we look closer at disengagement and the impact or the potential that has for attrition, that score is derived from a series of questions, which are listed up there as the anchor questions. And again, it depends on how employees responded to those five questions. We see that our risk of attrition is greatest with our career service employees at 10%, followed by our full-time faculty at 6%. So one of the purposes of the focus groups was to really find out what's going on, not only college-wide, but within these groups, to where that attrition risk is a little bit The next item that we looked at, and this really, again, formed the basis of the focus groups, were our top five highest-scoring items, and then our five lowest-scoring items. The item that is circled under highest-scoring, number 12, is interesting, because we had the ability to customize the survey and to add questions if we chose to. That question that is circled is the one question that, Dr. Williams, you wanted to ask. So basically, asking our employees, "We recognize that higher education is changing, certainly here in the state of Florida, but at the national level as well. How committed are we as employees to change and to grow within our organization and our responsibilities to meet those changes?" And that was our highest scoring at 94%. Our lowest-scoring items, again, have to do with really our confidence in change as a result of the survey, communication, and then growth within our own roles. So those five questions, again, served as the basis of really digging deeper into the data that we received, and having employees help us to understand and verify and clarify this. So the focus groups with that, we performed a root cause analysis, basically, by asking employees what's working in each of these areas, and then what needs to be improved? Why did we score the way that we did in each of these areas? So based on our vendor, their observations with this, again, our full-time participation rate was higher than the global norm for first-time administration. So definitely a strength and an indicator of engagement at the college. Because employees felt favorably about their team, their coworkers, and their supervisors, we need to find ways to leverage that piece of engagement, and then also really focus more on meaning, employees deriving meaning and connection to the job. So those also were strengths. Our opportunities for us lie with the groups that we talked about, the disengaged and those employees that are kind of on the brink within that opportunity group. And then their, decision-wise, is recommendation, and our results really tell us to stay focused this first round at the college level. Okay? So that's why we have been very careful to share the results that are really at that level, where we're not drilling down at this point into individual divisions, individual offices, but our focus really needs to work on our systems, improving things that impact the entire college. So a little bit about our focus groups. Again, this was something that was not required, but it is a best practice that organizations use to help understand the data, and it really puts the data and the interpretation of it in the hands of the employees. So we had about 11% of our total full-time population that participated in the focus groups. Our concern, because of the timing and the time of day that the focus groups were held, is that we may not get as many faculty participating in this, but we actually saw the opposite. So we had about 24% of focus group participants were full-time faculty, which represents about 10% of our total faculty population. So the top five themes, we actually generated over 3,000 comments and themes from this first round of focus groups. That then was narrowed down into 20, top 20 themes, and then employees, a survey went out and asked employees to identify the top three to five things they would like the college to work on. And what you're seeing before you are those top five themes, everything from lack of trust, down to just not having the time or the resources to be able to be innovative and creative. And we'll talk more about that in the next few slides. So round two, once we identified what those key, those priorities were from the college family, the second group of, our second round of focus groups was, okay, now we know what we need to fix. How do we do that? What recommendations do you employees have for how to resolve that? And so we took those five themes and then generated, again, a bunch of improvement strategies, and that's what you see before here. So again, this by no means is an exhaustive list. It is just a representation of what came out of that. So when it comes to increasing trust, so remember, that ties directly to employees' lack of confidence that change will occur as a result of this survey. And overwhelmingly, that has to do with our history. So much of what we're trying to change is our legacy. It's not about an individual leader, a leadership group. We recognize that we are all leaders here, regardless of our position, and it is really incumbent upon us to look at our legacy systems and our processes and our practices, and how can we change those to fit where we are today and where we're heading based on Dr. Williams's community of care. So what you see as far as the other recommendations that come out, really do have, pertain to our practices. Okay? So for example, how do we promote? How do we recognize employees? How do we provide opportunities for professional development? How do we engage people in committee work? Okay? So we're up against how we've done things in the past, and now we're saying, "It's time to change." Okay? It's time to look at how we've done this and give us a voice, and how do we make this more representative and more inclusive? So our next steps is, we are, shortly after this, we want to begin having system improvement teams that are comprised of volunteer employees. They will get the data from the surveys, including the recommendations that came out of the focus groups, and come up with suggestions on how to improve. We will then do periodic pulse checks, which basically are internally developed surveys, where we might look at communication and ask a few questions about, "How are we doing? We implemented this strategy. What difference is it making in terms of how employees feel about communication and transparency in that process?" And we'll repeat this cycle. It is not a one-and-done deal. It is our journey to continuous improvement, to make us a high-performing organization, which, again, as we said in the beginning, we've got the hearts of our employees. They love what they do. The highlight of the focus groups, Dr. Williams, that gives people hope is your mission. Okay? So again and again, it came out that this community of care, and what we're doing, and the communications, gives us hope. So keep going with that. Involve us more in the process. Let us design how we make these changes that impact how we do our work, and we're going to get there. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Cole?
Thank you for this, and thank you for encouraging the survey in and of itself. I think it's, surveys, people get survey fatigue and don't really realize that it does make a difference, but it's truly the only way to have a true understanding of what's going on. And so many changes have been implemented in the past 18 months to two years, and so it's interesting to me that in a, you know, example, clearly, of the legacy systems that are in place, just as you said, that people don't necessarily recognize those changes. And so we can all, we try as hard as we can to celebrate those adjustments that have been made, to recognize the importance of each and every employee, but it clearly shows that we need to do even a better job of that. So, thank you.
Mayor Foster?
Great report, great study, great research. And I've been a part of things like this for 30 years. I know that in some of these things, circumstances surrounding the college, their jobs, whatever, there can be a multiplier or a negative multiplier. I mean, this survey went out at the same time the Board of Trustees is screaming about the budget, and then we dinged them with health insurance. So is there any way to factor job satisfaction in with the fact that, you know, to use a Bible analogy, we're requiring people to make more bricks with less supplies?
Absolutely. And that was, I would not be representing our employees well if I did not say that that was an absolute overwhelming theme. Number one, certainly the lack of raises. Certainly, the request, I think that it is in there under one of the recommendations, that if you ask us to do more, yet you're taking away our resources, then find some other way to compensate us. And that's where the recognition comes in. When we, so also, I would be remiss to say that pay raises wasn't one of the suggestions, but part of their analysis was, after they generated these solutions, was, okay, let's look at the feasibility of these recommendations. So what is, what resources are required to implement these solutions? Financial resources, time, systems, people, et cetera. But then, more importantly, what's the impact that this solution is going to make? Because we want to try Because we want to try to do the greatest good, if you will. So once they use and they consider the solutions from that factor, that's why you see more low-to-no-cost recommendations versus these very high-level, "we want raises, we want this." But yes, it definitely is a factor. It is out there, but that's where the heart piece comes in, is employees, you got us. You got us committed at the most difficult way. We just need to recognize that it's going to take time to turn this around.
Yeah, I mean, and it's such a, colleges are crazy because, I mean, just from a budget standpoint, when I was mayor, I was elected in 2009, so we had this recession, nobody got raises, they got a lot of pats on the back, and, you know, I could say, "You're going to keep your job. You're going to keep your benefits. You're going to keep your health insurance. You're not going to be laid off." And that was reward enough. Colleges, in times of recession, things are great academic, or tuition-wise. But the economy is great. So enrollment's down because people have jobs, so that's a terrible argument to make to employees. So man, I don't know how you do it, but, you know, we need more, you know, it's that top-down. And Dr. Williams, you've started it, and I appreciate it, but I think we, we as a board, need to back Dr. Williams up with the atta boys, with the, you know, the pats on the back, and just that growing trust. The faculty, the staff, career service, they need to trust us as a board. I worry about career service because they had high participation, and they're frustrated and somewhat disengaged. They like their teams, their supervisors, their jobs, but they have very little confidence in us, I think. That's the way I read this. So yeah, keep coming, I mean, this is something, I don't, if it's on the agenda every month until we grasp this, I'm okay with it, because somehow, we as a board need to back up Dr. Williams with, you know, consistency, trust, inclusiveness. We value and appreciate, and if there's anything we can do as a board to help in this endeavor, yeah, let us know. And I'm going to get off my travel soapbox because I think that's, I just, this was an eye-opener, so thanks.
That was very well said, Mayor Foster, and I couldn't agree more. I think it is encouraging, the amount of people that participated in this process. I'm with you, Mayor Foster. I think it's going to be imperative for us to hear consistent updates as we move forward over the next year or two. We've done some hard work digging in and getting to the meat of some of the issues out there. And now it's going to be even harder work to try to implement some changes to hopefully see some change in how people perceive their role here and their backing of leadership here as well.
What are you going to say?
Dr. Williams?
One of the things, when I first started, I came up with the community of care because we needed to work on the culture and the communication, collaboration, and creativity. And so I think the survey pretty much backed up the need for the community of care, and now it's the work that we need to do to roll up our sleeves and make sure that's cascaded throughout the organization. I want to thank Margaret and her team, Jeff and Linda, I don't know if they're in the back, but because I am the person who asks the questions, and I ask questions. I need to understand what does this mean and what does that mean? And they were very open to that, but I'm real proud of this work, and we're going to roll up our sleeves to improve the culture of the institution. And I appreciate you, Mayor Foster, for saying the reality of what's happening at the college and us trying to continue to build the plane while we're flying it. So we're trying to make those changes and improve the conditions to be able to do the things that we know we can, we want to do, and to provide the support of the employee to remove those barriers and help employees gain the success that they need. So I want to thank you, and we'll definitely keep you posted.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just one thing. I know we talk a lot strategically and high-level about shifts that take a long time. For example, the property analysis and looking at our facilities and how that impacts the budget and what our legislative asks are. And, but we kind of understand why we're asking those questions over the long term, but I imagine some of the strategic decisions or policy decisions are lost that we're making that decision today that might take a couple of years, to Mayor Foster's point, that will free up some of these resources to apply. So perhaps we can do some brainstorming as to how we can better communicate-
Big picture.
Big picture, why we're making these decisions. We're not just looking at facilities for the sake of facilities. We're looking, it touches so many other things and-
Building a solid foundation-
Right.
-to allow us to do more in the future.
And communication is one of the biggest challenges we have at the college, and we're going to have to address that. And I think in the survey, it came out, I think we've talked about it for quite some time. We've tried some things, and we'll continue to move, but I do think big picture and understanding the why-
Right.
-but also the what. You know, what are we really doing is going to be important for everybody to know.
The adjustment in class schedules.
All of those things.
I mean, all of those things and-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
We'll move now to a construction update with Ms. Diana Wright.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
I'm here to present an update on the Joseph H. Lang Senior Student Success Center. Since our last update, Lima has completed several items, as noted on this slide. Some of them included tying in the building to the campus utilities, also providing a slab core for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens on the second and third floor. Our internal teams also processed about $2.5 million in direct purchases of materials, which generated estimated savings of $140,000. Our future focus is going to be on, you know, the ongoing roughin' for the MEP on the first floor, the roof installation, which should be completed within, by the end of this month, and the air barrier and interior, exterior framing installation. You'll be happy to know that we are still on budget and on time. And before I move on to the next slide, I wanted to show you this, we're showcasing this picture here. This is a picture of the students from St. Pete High School Center for Construction and Technology. I thought it was an excellent way, Lima invited them onto the construction site, and I thought it was an excellent way to not only expose local students to the construction field, but also to promote community involvement. Before I show you the, our monthly drone video, I wanted to present what the site will look like. So this is the view of the actual building from Eagle Lake. And this view is taken from the second-story outdoor terrace. And this is our drone video of the actual building as we speak. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
On time and on budget.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now to our consent agenda. There's no old business. I'd like to take the new business together, if we could, with three different action items here under one motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So move, thank you. You all saw the informational reports in your packet. Any questions regarding any of that from the Board of Trustees today? With that, we'll move to the President's report.
I really have no report on the legislative session right now. We have walked the halls, met with people, made the phone calls, did emails, millions of visits, and we're waiting now for the House and Senate to have their conference where they start their bargaining. And as mentioned earlier, the Senate has the state colleges very favorable, and so we hope to hear from them on where we land. We have pushed our agenda for St. Petersburg College for the ecosystem, cybersecurity, and the health campus, and we're hoping to hear some good news. If we don't, it surely won't be because we haven't been out there beating the bushes, meeting with folks, and making it happen. And for those of you who've joined us on all of those meetings locally and in Tallahassee, thank you so much for all of your help, and I look forward to reporting something good. So I'll keep you posted as I learn, as the things unfold.
Thank you.
That will be the end of my report today.
Our next meeting is May 21st at the Seminole Campus. Thank you all for being here today. Meeting adjourned.